Yep. Yeah, you're right. Okay, I think we're gonna get started. Like to call the meeting to order? Mr. Calavita, will you take the role, please?
Ms. Driver.
Here.
Ms. Grillo.
Present.
Mr. Herbert.
Here.
Ms. Lindthorst.
Here.
Ms. Long.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Ms. O'Reilly.
Here.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and the Trentonian on January 6, 2021. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. This meeting is being videotaped for the purpose of board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on Comcast Channel 19, Verizon FiOS Channel 32, and the school district website, www.hvrd.org. Will you please join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will request a motion to approve the minutes of the regular enclosed meetings on November 15, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. And now, we will accept a report from Mr. Neal, the student representative to the Board.
Our main focus from the student council for the month of December is situated towards the winter pep rally, which will be taking place in 10 days, which is like the last day before our break. And why we're putting so much focus on this is because we have to have our winter pep rally indoors, and this is gonna put a lot of challenges on us, because for our fall pep rally, we were able to operate outdoors, and it's much more flexible when it comes to COVID restrictions outlined by the school. And so, we want to make sure that for our, for the winter pep rally, we're setting a good example for the rest of the students before we go on break, and we want to limit any source of potential outbreak. And in doing this, we devised a plan where we're gonna split up the students in grades across the school, and we're gonna have the seniors within the gym where the actual pep rally will be same place. And we're gonna have the underclassmen or other grades situated throughout the school, like we're gonna have the juniors in the pack, and then we're gonna have the freshmen and sophomores in their respective recitation classes. And we're just doing this to make sure that we're not cramming out all the students all next to each other in the gym, especially because we know certain families will be traveling, whether it's out of the country or in the country. We just want to limit any source of outbreak before we come back from the break, and we just want to make sure that we're setting a good example to be safe, especially in the winter season where we know transmission rates are a lot higher indoors, and we know that everybody, a lot more people, especially within the school, are gonna be indoors, and we just want to set a good example for the rest of the student body. And for student government activities, like student political activities, we'll be having a dress code forum, which will be taking place as we're planning to be, either at the end of January or early February. And this is something that we want to take action on, just through the climate of other schools around the state and the country, but also other students have brought this to attention of the other officers. And this isn't like any indication of drastic change, but it's a discussion that we want to have with students who are open to talking about it, because we know that certain students have reached out and talked about their uncomfortability with the, and how they felt with this current dress code in place. And we spoke to Ms. Riley about this, and we also want to speak to our new vice principal, just coming from another school, and we want to look at other schools' current dress codes as a template and just as a model to see how we could reflect on that, and if there's any discussion or change needs to happen. And like, what I want to stress is that this is no indication of change, but rather just a discussion about if any changes need to be made. But we just want to reach out to the students just to make sure that everybody's comfortable with the current dress code. And for just general other student-related activities, as many of you know, that winter sports are coming back, and I know summer's starting like this week, and some have already started, but just a general reminder for like other students and parents, if you want to purchase tickets, you have to do it online. And I, there are COVID restrictions in place. I know with indoor venues, I'm pretty sure it's at 25%. I'm not 100% sure about that, but I know that they're gonna be limiting the amount of participants to be our spectators, to be watching the games. And also, last note is that we're just welcome to, welcome our new vice principal, Mr. Smith, and we hope he does well here.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that report, Mr. Neal. I will say, I have heard that there's quite a bit of buzz about the pep rally, and the kids are really getting excited, and I also think it's great that you guys are, you know, advocating on your behalf regarding the dress code and really, you know, examining the policies of neighboring districts. I appreciate the thought and the effort that's going into that, and we look forward to hearing more about those deliberations. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Neal? Seeing none, we will say thank you, and as always, you're welcome to stay with us or to go off and do your homework, whatever is easiest for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I embarrass Mr. Neal real quick for one second?
Of course.
So, Mr. Neal just heard about a few college acceptances, and he's eagerly waiting a few more, but I think he believes he got in the pit in Penn State. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Thanks again. Okay. And now, we're going to spend a few minutes recognizing our outgoing board members. A sad task, because we will miss you both dearly. And I just wanted to say a few words. First, I'm gonna speak about Deb O'Reilly, my classmate, since we were elected together, the two Devys, and it's always been fun going through with you. It's really been a pleasure getting to know you, Deb. I have so much respect for you, all the responsibilities that you have. You balance them so well. I know you've been through some really tough challenges in these past few years, and, you know, I appreciate that you juggled it all with dignity and grace and carried yourself with your trademark good humor, and just wanted to say that. As an educator in another district, your perspective has always served this board well, in your work on the Personnel Committee, your work on the Finance Committee, and in other capacities. You've had, served as liaison to the Strive PTO, and you've been such a dedicated advocate for our students with special needs, and I know that they appreciate that greatly. And I respect your tenacity and your desire to always put transparency first. Your ability to speak plainly and truthfully has really served us well in many instances and at significant junctures, and has really always helped to get our conversations to the next level. And in this manner, you've advanced the cause for the sharing of information amongst board members and committees, and by doing so, you've really helped us to put new processes in place that have enhanced our communications. So, we wish you all the best. We're going to miss you, and we thank you for your dedication.
Thank you, Deb. Thank you. I'm just gonna say, my honesty is my strength, but it's also my weakness, so thank you for your patience with me.
Well, as usual, you stole a lot of my thunder, but, but I do want to say, Deb, it was an honor serving on the Education Program Committee with you. I love the fact that I had an educator in one that was a special education educator, because you brought that lens to our work, and you were able to really make sure that when we were designing programs, we were designing them for our students with those special needs. And you were able to speak the language that we were speaking, because I know a lot of times, lay folks, when they sit in these committees, they don't understand our alphabet soup, and you did. And you validated the work that we were doing well. You challenged us somewhere we could do better, and plainly, which is important to me. I don't want people surrounding me just telling me what I want to hear. I want people asking me the hard questions and pushing us to be our best selves, and you really did that. So, I want to thank you for being the voice for the teacher, for the parent, and for the kid that doesn't have a voice. So, thank you so much for that.
Does anyone else have any words to share? I'm going to present this to Deb once we're all set.
I'll say something real fast.
Sure, please.
Someone's got to, right? No, um, no, Deb, honestly, Deb, I think the board's gonna, we're gonna, we're losing something with losing you. Me and you probably on a lot of issues, did not see eye to eye on them, but it was always respectful. We both knew we were coming from a place that what we were trying to do was best for the district and best for the students especially, and I respect that. I liked having the opposing view. I liked having someone that would go back and forth, but it was never, it was never something that turned personal. It was never, we both came from the right place, and I think the board's really gonna lose something with losing you. So, I really appreciate everything you did for the board, and I'm gonna miss having you on the board, too.
Thank you, John.
Deb, I just want to say thank you, because you were my mentor for this first year that I was here, and I don't think I could have gotten through without you. You were extremely supportive, and it was helpful that you were also a teacher and a mom of seniors. We had that in common as well. And I am very sad to see that we won't be working together for the rest of my term, but I hope that our friendship remains. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
She wanted to take the microphone with her.
Oh, I broke it.
All right. And Jenny, Jenny, hang in there, Jenny. We're gonna, we're gonna make it easy. Don't worry. Next to Adam Sawicki, Jenny is currently the longest-serving board member. She has served on numerous board committees. I won't even remember all of them, since your time predates mine, chairing the Education Program Committee, for which she's been a staunch advocate, serving on personnel and in other capacities. She has been the longtime liaison to the Hopewell Valley Ed Foundation, serving admirably, keeping the board up to speed on all education foundation matters, and helping us to best support their, the important efforts that they make in this district. In all of her work at the board level, Jenny has also been a champion of all unique learners in our district, making sure their needs are adequately met, asking the important questions, and in doing so, she has advanced significant changes for students regarding their abilities and needs, and meeting their needs. Perhaps most notably, Jenny recently served on the Superintendent's Search Committee and worked diligently for many hours in order to assist the board in seeking a successful outcome. Her expertise proved to be invaluable throughout this process, as did her knack for making sure that all of our meetings were run efficiently and did not extend into the wee hours of the night, which I think Andrea and Anita would attest to, they would easily have done had Jenny not brought us full circle. So, Jenny, thank you so much for all you've done. Thank you for serving this district so admirably. We will, we will miss you terribly. Don't, don't be a stranger. Did anyone else have any comments for Jenny?
Sure, absolutely. Again, another one of my fellow EdCom people, and just while she also fought for those students with special needs, she also fought for that kid in the middle. And many of the great programs we have added to date are a result of this lady here pushing, pushing, saying, you know, we can do more. We need to make sure that all kids have the ability to thrive, whether they're going off to Princeton, or the community college, or they're entering the military. We need to make sure that kids have the avenue to get wherever they need to go, and that we're focused on that. So, I thank you for that and reminding us and returning and spinning us back to how do we make sure that we're sending out well-rounded students that are ready to do whatever they feel they're compelled to do when they leave us. And I, as a mom, as a former principal of your kiddos, you were always there to support the school, the teacher, whatever you can do to help us, even at that level as a PTO person, just like, how can I help pitch in here at the school level? So, I don't know where you found all the time to do all those things, but I just, I'm so grateful and thankful for your service, and I'm gonna miss you. I'm really gonna miss both of you being on the board.
Absolutely. And some people, I'm sure, will be sharing later for both of you. It's just, you know, we have our, we have our board holiday party this evening, so.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all of you very quickly. This is, it's more emotional than I expected it to be, because it's not just the board. It's, my oldest daughter started at 12:08 in '05, and from that moment on, I was involved in the schools with PTO, my first year as PTO president, with Tiana Smith's first year as principal there. There's a lot of overlap. Auctions, I've served on the HVE for many years before the board, so it's been a long time connected to Hopewell in some capacity. And it's, you know, it's been an honor and a privilege. I've worked with these administrators, administrators who've moved on, board members who've moved on, and this board. And I have to say, the board of the last two years, we didn't know what we were in for, with COVID, Superintendent's Search. The people on this board and the administrators are some of the hardest-working, most caring, compassionate people I've ever worked with, so it's really been an honor to work with all of you. So, thank you.
And just for the benefit of those who can't see it, it says, "Presented by the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education, Pennington, New Jersey, to Jenny Long, to Deborah O'Reilly, in appreciation for your service and dedication as a member of the Board of Education."
Can I just say to Jenny? Jenny, when I first started on the board, you immediately made me feel comfortable and welcomed, and I really, truly appreciated that. And also, whenever we had topics to talk about, I felt like I want to know what Jenny thinks, you know, that was my, let me hear what Jenny thinks, because you had a balanced view of things, and it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you. And we will move on, and we will celebrate you both later. I do have a brief report this evening. I will try to go through it relatively quickly here. First and foremost, I just wanted to say thank you as we get to the end of a calendar year. I'd like to thank our administration and staff for overseeing the recent in-district vaccination clinics for our students aged five to 11. I believe Dr. Treese will be speaking to the details of this more in her report, but really want to thank everyone for, you know, our staff, in particular, our nurses, our custodial staff, our CSOs, and some of our first responders as well for serving, you know, outside of school hours and being so dedicated in order to get this important task completed. I'd also like to thank our administration, staff, students, and families again for continuing to work under challenging circumstances, working together and keeping our sights focused upon health, the health and safety of staff and students, and upon student success and achievement. I'm confident that we will find our way. I also wanted to share some thoughts this evening. We've had a lot of questions and comments regarding our public comment periods at our boarding, at our board meetings, and so I wanted to share a little bit about that and speak to the purpose and the policy for board meeting public comment periods. Please know that first and foremost, the primary focus of public comment is for the board to listen to your concerns. We appreciate all the feedback that we receive during public comment. Any measure of success that has been achieved in this district is due to the efforts of us all working together and sharing our perspectives for the common good. While we may not always agree, when we collaborate and communicate effectively, we attain positive results. As stated in Board Policy 0167, which pertains to public participation in board meetings, the board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. We appreciate the importance of the public comment period and opportunity to hear from members of the public as it informs our decision-making and the work that we do. However, it is important to note, the public comment period is not designed to be a discussion period or a give and take. As I mentioned, it's a time for the public to share and for the board and administration to listen and to learn. When possible, the superintendent, administration, and board will respond to questions after all participants have had the opportunity to participate. We strive to respond to the concerns brought forth in a respectful and organized manner. However, please do not expect for the board to respond in all instances. As I stated, we take your concerns and questions very seriously and want to have sufficient time to allow our administration to process and research issues if need be. We will, however, attempt to respond to your questions and concerns via email or at a future meeting, or we'll have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. I would also bring your attention to the statement that is shared by the board president at the beginning of each public session, which I will be reading shortly, and would bring your attention to the last sentence, which reads, "In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. If a more formal complaint or grievance is made, the directive set forth in Board Policy 9130 will be followed. Generally, Board Policy 9130, which pertains to public comments and grievances, states, "When a board member is confronted with an issue, he or she will withhold comment, commitment, and/or opinion, and refer the complaint or inquiry to the superintendent, who shall review the complaint according to established procedures. Only in those cases where satisfactory adjustment cannot be made by the superintendent and staff shall communications and complaints be referred to the board for resolution. We recognize that our community may be polarized on some issues. We welcome different perspectives. We want our school board meetings to serve as an example to our students that members of the board and the community can deal with controversial issues in a civil manner and demonstrate mutual respect for everyone's views. In that spirit, we ask that all speakers please address their comments directly to the board rather than the audience, and all speakers and members of the public show respect for others' views and maintain civility during the meeting. We have also received messages of concern regarding the timing of the first public comment period in the meeting agenda. Members of the public have suggested that the board designate that the public comments, the first public comment session be one of the first orders of business at the meeting, rather than waiting until the reports have been presented. As a response to this, the board and administration feel it's important to note that certain reports, such as the superintendent's report, should occur before the comment period, so that members of the public may respond to the points raised, ask questions, and so forth. We do our best to move efficiently through our reports while providing important information for our stakeholders. When students or staff are being honored or showcased in any way at our meetings, we typically do that as one of the first orders of business, so that we do not keep our students too late into the evening or make them wait through the board's business. We are also more likely to have the greatest number of people in attendance at that point to recognize their achievements. The meeting's first public comment period is meant to follow these initial reports and occurs at this point for the reasons I've mentioned, and before the board gets to the business portion of our meeting. We then hold a second public comment period after all committee reports and other business have been completed, so that any concerns may be addressed. In some instances, such as when the biannual violence and vandalism report is read, the board is statutorily required to hold a special public comment period immediately following, which is tied specifically to that report. Upon further discussion and to be understanding of the constraints upon participants' time, perhaps we will hold a second public comment period immediately after the first in those instances, so that members of the public do not have to wait to speak until after the business portion of the meeting has ended. And finally, I wanted to note that I have participated in a number of meetings and information sessions with the board's advocacy group, the New Jersey School Board Association, and much of our conversation has focused upon the contentious nature of board meetings in recent months, given diverging opinions that have been shared regarding pandemic-related safety measures and issues regarding the curriculum as well. These are challenging times, and these are thorny issues, and I think that all of us, board members, administrators, staff, students, families, and other stakeholders are doing our absolute best to navigate through them together. So, this seemed like a good juncture to share a bit about the things that board members wish people in the public knew about the role that we hold. Without going into too much detail, I'll just note a few of them. Board members have to go through a criminal background check before taking office, a mandate that no other elected official must go through. We must adhere to a code of ethics, which states, among other things, that we will not administer schools, but that we will see that they are well-run, that we will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would cause injury to individuals or the schools. We are the best-trained elected officials in the state. The state requires that we take training courses on policy, school finance, personnel, student achievement, labor relations, school law, and no other officials, elected officials are required to do this. We are legally required to go into executive session when we discuss certain matters. There are solid legal reasons for why we must go into these closed sessions. We don't do this by choice, and this is to protect the privacy of employees and students. It also allows us to discuss, to discuss any anticipated litigation, issues of attorney-client privilege, negotiations with labor unions, and security matters. We are not, the board members are not the people you seek out if you have a problem with your child's teacher. As I said, our mandate is not to As I said, our mandate is not to manage the schools but to oversee the management. We ask that in those instances, you follow the proper chain of command. Perhaps you go to the teacher first, or the department supervisor, and then the principal, and so forth. The public comment period, as I mentioned, is for members of the public to comment, not engage in discussion with board members. Board members do not receive a paid salary. That does happen in other states, but not in New Jersey. The board only oversees one employee, the superintendent, even though we vote on and make recommendations for hiring that the superintendent does. And one or two board members may not enact new policies. The board only acts when a majority of its members vote on something. So please, you know, we encourage you, if you have any questions, reach out. We try to be very responsive by email, and as I said, we welcome your public comments at our meetings. Thank you. And with that, we will move to Dr. Treese's report.
Thank you, President Lindthorst. I'm Vicki. Can you go to the first slide? I started with our mission statement because I always like to just remind myself, at least, the work that we're doing and the work that I do in partnership with the board that's here with me. You said, share that the COVID clinic, I did not have in my slide deck an update on that, but I can share that we had quite a bit of support for our second dose clinic that we ran at Timber Lane this Saturday. I really want to thank all of our staff members who volunteered to be there, our administrators, our first responders, our CSOs, that were there to support the 123 students, I think, that signed up for that. So, and thank you, parents, for bringing out your children. It really was an effort that was well-received by the community. The Health Department has offered to run additional clinics if parents feel they need those for students and/or for boosters for yourselves if you're interested in that. So please feel free to email me if you'd like us to set something like that up, and we can work with the Health Department to see the availability to provide them the space to do that. And I also want to thank our Health Department because they do arrange all of those for us. Budget calendar, I wanted to put this up to remind you of our plans to discuss budget. We'll be diving back into that very soon after we organize the board with our new members, who we have two here tonight, so welcome. So we made some tweaks to this since the last time, so I wanted to make sure that you saw the new calendar, you saw the changes that we've made. February 7th and 14th, we do have a work session where we'll discuss budget, and this is really just to accommodate the January. We decided we had to push some things to accommodate the training of the new members that were coming on, and we had to work with a consultant that will be doing that from school boards. So we have those two dates. It'll be one of those two dates based on when the consultant is available. Then March, I mean, February 28th, the receipt of the state aid allocation, so Mr. Colavita will be able to share that information with us. Work session on March 7th, March 14th, the tentative budget adoption, and then hopefully by March 20th, we will be turning that in, as is due, to the county executive superintendent. And then we have two additional meetings there for the public hearing, and then also an additional one on the 12th if needed. So we wanted to give you those changes and updates. The health update, I had, when I prepared this slide deck last week, nine new cases. We are well above that now. We've doubled that since last week, since the Thanksgiving break. And it's not unusual for us to have these surges after a long holiday break or a long extended break for the students. We had it in the summer, we had it last year around these holidays, and we had some autonomy at that time to be preemptive and to go remote so that kids, if they showed symptoms along those two weeks after returning from a holiday, a winter break or otherwise, spring break, they could do that while being full-remote and not cause other students to be out, and we have this fluid plan. We are no longer permitted to do that by the New Jersey Department of Ed. I keep asking the question, as do the other superintendents, and we did again this Friday, and they still have not had movement on that. I'm hoping that we do have movement because not only has the whole state moved from moderate yellow to orange, some of the school districts around us are teetering on red. So as a result of where we are, we have moved to a 14-day quarantine policy for unvaccinated individuals per the CDC guidelines, and our Health Department follows those, and they call us and say, "There's a student that we know is positive, either through a test at their pediatrician, or they've been found through contact tracing, or the school nurse reaches out and says to the Health Department, and they suggest the quarantine time." Those districts around us who are red or teetering on red are now at 24 days of quarantine. So this is, while this is 14, and this is a lot, I would like to keep us away from that 24. I mean, 14 days is long enough to have our kids quarantining. If you are vaccinated, you still should be monitoring yourself. If you've been exposed to someone, and we do let you know, if you've been exposed to someone who's positive and you're in contact, you should still be monitoring your symptoms. If you have any symptoms, you should stay home and test. If you don't have symptoms and you're coming to school, you should still test according to when the nurse recommends that you test, on day five or seven, to ensure that we're catching those folks who are vaccinated, who might be asymptomatic or have such mild symptoms they don't realize that they're carrying the virus. We have asked a question. President Lindthorst and I met with the Health Department, and then we also had them come to the Education Program Committee, and we asked the hard questions you've been asking us as well. Why hasn't there been a change? Because we know that there are a lot of breakthrough cases as well. Are they going to change the recommendation for us to quarantine both vaccinated and unvaccinated students? At this time, that is not the recommendation. I've asked, can I go over beyond and do that? That is not something I legally can do without their support. So we're going to keep asking the question. The rationale that they give is that if you're vaccinated, you shed much less of the virus, you're less likely to pass the virus, and you're contagious for a much shorter period of time. But again, I do ask these questions when they come up. I certainly am asking and making sure that we're getting the best information and most current information. What they did share is that a good number of these cases are breakthrough. Most of the cases that we have right now that we're seeing after the break are in-home transmission. We still have very little evidence of school transmission from student to student. Since the beginning of this, back when we brought in-school learning back in last school year, we've only had two up to date. So we really are doing a good job at not passing things around in school, but it's happening when we're breaking bread over the holidays, or we're having family, or we're having playdates, where kids and folks are maybe not following protocols that are as safe as what's happening in school. So all of these are in-home transmissions. And so if I can suggest anything to the community that could be helpful to not just you but to other parents whose kid might get caught up in this 14-day quarantine, when a kid becomes positive, it doesn't just affect that kid, it affects other kids that may be in close contact, and then that causes more students to go out. Staff as well. So we ask our staff to do the same thing. So when in doubt, just stay home. Try to monitor and practice some safety protocols at your house. And another suggestion, and this is something my friends are doing, they're having people do a home test before they come over for celebrations, just to make sure that they're not creating that in their house. And that's something, just something I just ran across today, that might be an idea. But just something to think about as we go into the winter break, where I anticipate there'll be more gatherings, and that's to be expected. People want to get together with their families. But just try to be as safe as possible. If you're feeling any symptoms at all, even if it's just one symptom like a headache, you know, have your kid or yourself, staff members were asking that you stay home, and when in doubt, call your school nurse, and they'll give you some advice on where to proceed or what to do in terms of testing or not, or staying home or not. Okay, so the next one is, as a part of our requirement here to, as opening safe schools, we were required to adopt a plan. It is attached to the information that's part of the board agenda. We have a plan that we adopted early in August, and I had to resubmit that plan. The only change that I've made to it at this point is that I've extended the quarantine to up to 14 days at this point. I have made no other changes to it beyond minor grammar, little changes. It is very general, so we have movement and room to do what we need to do as we expand or contract the plan based on where we are. I'm hoping at some point, we're going to be making some shifts in some of the things that we're doing, but right now, based on where our numbers are, I don't see that happening anytime soon. The next piece I wanted to talk about was SEL. I know a lot of us, social-emotional learning is still something that's on the forefront with us. That's the first thing that we need to do. If our kids don't feel safe in school, if they're not taking care of themselves emotionally, then learning's not going to happen. And we've noticed, this year in particular, students have been struggling with some behaviors of being back in school, having not been consistently in school last year. They've had to relearn how to be students together in a building. So we've been taking some serious resets because as they're starting to get comfortable and settle in, we're seeing an increase in harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports. Some of these are founded and some are not, but the foundation of a lot of it is conflicts between students, us not getting along the way we should. We're escalating on something that we started on social media or in person, and then it escalates to someone saying something really unkind that may spark an anti-bullying report. So we have taken some time to really, at least I've asked my principals, and they've been doing this work anyway, to pull students and really talk about, how should we be functioning in the building, and how should we be behaving? What is bullying? What is conflict? How do we get help from an adult when we can't resolve a conflict in a positive way? How can we do that without escalating to this point where somebody has really done something unkind to someone else, either physically, verbally, or otherwise? I've asked those principals to also share those things with you all, parents, so to send an email home to say, "We've had this discussion in school," so that you can reinforce that or understand the conversations that are happening in your classroom, and you can extend on those at home. Parents, you're also encouraged to monitor your students' social media. Some of the things that we've caught have been the result of just that, parents catching on to something and forwarding it to us so that we can get on top of investigating and resolving some of these issues before they escalate to the level where kids are hurting each other. So that is, especially in the approaching holidays, and there'll be some very fancy phones that are gifted, really, it's a good time to sit down with your students, your child, and really make a plan about how you're going to conduct yourself on social media, and just be careful, you know, teaching them how to be careful with what they're posting, how they're engaging with their friends. And then finally, I know in the news that a lot of us have seen what's been going on with Michigan, with the shootings that happened in Michigan, and then the kind of roll downhill that happened after that with some of the school districts in New Jersey. Just five around here that were affected by students writing threats on walls, and then a student bringing a loaded gun into school nearby us. It's really this heightened sense of, you know, the safety of our students in schools. That is also something that we review with our students of late, the importance of reporting when you see something like this online or in social media, because a lot of times, students do know or have seen these, evidence of these things happening or unfolding in plans that are posted online. Parents are sometimes privy to this because your child may come to you and say, "I saw that Jimmy posted X, Y, and Z online, and I'm worried." What I would ask of parents is, as a community, the best thing to do is if you receive something like that, your child points it out to you, you're looking over his shoulder, you catch it, please call 911 first if it's a weekend or after-school hours to ensure that it gets to the police first, because they'll go to the house and make sure everyone's okay. If they're threatening to hurt themselves or others, 911 or the police should be the first one you call, and then absolutely reach out by email or tip line for the district so that we can also get that information. And really, I can impress upon you that, because I know that as neighbors, we don't want to be obtrusive in other people's lives, but I'd rather us make a mistake and err on the side of caution, and then somebody gets woken up and everybody's okay, than we not make the call and then it's not okay. So please do that first if you feel like there's a real threat to somebody's safety or others, and then reach out to us. And we are also reminded, our students, of this, as well as to go to a trusted adult for help right away if it's a weekend or after-school hours, to do that right away. And you will be able to remain anonymous in that process as well. And then the final thing is, the holidays can be a stressful time for a lot of people. You know, I think we have this perception that it should be joyous, but it does put stress on a family for a lot of reasons. So if you find that you're struggling or your child's struggling and you need support, just know that we're here for you. Here are some resources that I've asked Dan DiStefano, our supervisor of counseling, to put together. We will share out the slide deck. But reach out, we're here for you, we're here to help provide support, and we do have the great partnership with Rutgers Clinician, who has been really going over and beyond to support our students and our families that are in crisis right now. And we have the ability, and I'm going to speak to those parents that are really struggling with kids with mental health, and you know that's close to my heart. I know how hard it is when you're dealing with a child with significant mental health issues to get access to that real help for that adolescent, to get a bed if they need a bed, to get them in to see someone that's going to give them the help that they need, and to provide them the academic support that they need, because our kids are thriving academically still in all of that. So they need both of those things taken care of. We definitely have the right support and the balance right now to make sure that you get the help that you need, and we can do that in-house for a lot of those cases, rather than sending you to an emergency room and having that awful experience when you have a kid in crisis. So please, if you feel like you're at a point where you need that sort of help, please reach out to Mr. DiStefano or Ms. Donardo, and they will get you the help that you need without having to take you in a crisis mode into that emergency room as best we can. And then my last slide is just a reminder of the civility policy. This was adopted some years ago here in the district, and it really just says that we are here to work as a collaborative team together. We're not going to agree on everything. There are going to be some things that we don't agree on. There are going to be some things or decisions that I have to make that I may not agree on, but I'm mandated or I'm required to do so because I'm a public school official, and we accept public funding, so there are things that we have to do. And as much as I may be in agreement with you that I would like to do it a different way, that's not something that I can just go rogue and just do on my own. I'm not saying that doesn't happen other places, but that's not something that I'm going to do. So while I certainly am open to all of you have to say, I may keep giving you the same answer, and you may not be happy with it, but that is the answer I have. We can do that, and I'm more than open, and I'm required to do that. I'm here to do that. I want you to challenge me. I want you to challenge us to do a better job. But when we tip over the line of being abusive, and I'm not talking about me, because I'm a big girl, I can take a lot of it, because I know you're advocating for your kids. I'm speaking for my nurses, my principals, my teachers, who are just being yelled at, and there's a lot of abusive language that's going back and forth, when they're just enforcing policy that we're required to enforce. So I'm asking that we remember this civility policy, because we have never, in all the time I've been here, and we've had some pretty contentious conversations, and we've gotten through those, this is the first time I feel like we're tippy-toe into this line where we may have to say, you know, "You've been so abusive," that we just have to sever communication. We've gotten pretty close a couple of times with the level of abuse, and not, to me, I'm talking about some of my staff members. So I just want to remind folks that they're just doing their job. So just try to be patient. I know this is all frustrating. I know it's wildly inconvenient when folks are forced into quarantine, but know that we're just doing what we're required to do. So I appreciate your continued support and understanding, and I'll keep challenging and asking the hard questions as well. And then just happy winter break and stay safe. And then we can move. The public comment? Oh, no, we're going to do Vicki's first.
Well, first, we'll see if anyone has any questions. Thank you for your report. Any board members have any questions for Dr. Treese? Okay, seeing none, we'll say thank you for your report, and also mention that we are very grateful that you're here with us this evening, sharing your time with us on your birthday. So happy birthday.
I can't think of a better place to be. I can't. These are my peeps. These are my people. I love this community. I do, I love this community. You know I love you. So now I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Plitzis. I did share she was going to present tonight our Stay Strong scores. This is the impetus for the reason why we spent some of our ESSR money the way that we did. We're required to do that for learning loss anyway, but she was able to identify some of our areas of need based on our data.
Thank you, Dr. Treese. So the Stay Strong assessment was required by the state of New Jersey in fulfillment of their annual testing requirement since the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment was not administered in the spring. since the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment was not administered in the spring. So this assessment was administered back in September and October. So I'm just going to briefly review the data that we gather from the results. So for those of you who are not aware of the Start Strong, it was administered for ELA, or English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science for grades four through 10, except for science, which also tested our current seniors. And the scores fell into one of three categories: less support needed, some support needed, and strong support needed. So now I'm just going to go and review the results by grade level. So for grade four ELA and mathematics, overall, the bulk of the students needed less support. However, in math, there seemed to be additional support needed as compared to ELA. And you can see this viewed on the graphs that are color coded by each level of support. For grade five ELA and math, overall, the majority of grade five students needed less support, while in math, about 40% of the students needed strong support. For grades six through eight, overall, the ELA results showed that the majority of the students for grades six through eight needed less support. For math, more support was needed, especially for students who took the Math VI, Math VII, or Math VIII assessment. There was not as much support needed for those students who were in Algebra I and Geometry. And finally, for grades nine and 10, overall, the ELA results were consistent with the other grade bands with less support needed in ELA. Algebra I and Geometry students seemed to need greater support. So in terms of science, again, the students in grades six, nine, and 12 were assessed for science support. Overall, it seemed that the strongest support was needed for grade 12 students, although this is somewhat of a null point because many seniors do not take science. So the seniors who are taking science are either taking an elective or an AP science course. So our next steps are, we just received the individual school reports from the state and these will be going out sometime between now and winter bring. And these results were also shared with supervisors and building administrators to share with teachers to help identify the student gaps. And those will subsequently be addressed in meetings and follow-ups with teachers and then in the classrooms. Any questions or thank you?
Thank you, Dr. Plitzis. Any questions for Vicki?
I have a question. Do we know how we compare two neighboring districts? We don't have that data.
We have none. We have not received that and there's rumors that we may not receive it. So I'm not sure. Any other questions? And we'll say thank you. You did a very thorough job. Appreciate it. Any items of old business to bring before the board? I will just mention that we still continue to try to schedule a time for our board self-evaluation. It's now looking like it's probably going to happen towards the end of January or the beginning of February, and I will keep you all posted on that. And we will enter into public comment session one. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. When you approach the podium, we ask you to also write down your name and address for us to put into the official record. Public comment is now open.
Matt Branham, Pennington. Firstly, thank you, Dr. Therese, for meeting with my wife regarding the school's COVID management strategy and the diversity of views regarded this in the community. It was a helpful dialogue. With regard to the health update, last year, from September to December, we had 35 reported COVID cases in our schools. At that time, all close contacts of a positive case had to quarantine. During that time, many were awaiting a pharmaceutical product they were told would protect them from contracting COVID. This falsehood was later repeated by the president this past summer. This year, despite the relentless marketing and distribution of this pharmaceutical product, we have an almost 7% increase in cases. Of the 48 reported cases in our district, many of these cases were breakthrough cases. And of those breakthrough cases, none of those students were required to quarantine. These figures I have mentioned demonstrates how deeply flawed the district quarantine policy is. Since September, how many children have had to quarantine? 100? 200? Of these children, how many became sick with COVID? How many of these cases in our schools are among the vaccinated? Parents would like transparency with regard to this data. This data is relevant to the district quarantine policy. Can the board direct me to this data? The effects of segregation politics and political reductionism are hurting our children and damaging the fabric of our society. Quarantine for healthy children is depriving these children of their right to education. We, the parents, know that the Governor's Emergency Health Powers Act is illegal and in violation of our U.S. Constitution, Section 1, Clause 5 of our state constitution, as well as Section 7 of the 1964 Civil Rights Act. And we will continue to highlight this inequity until it is defeated in court for the benefit of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branham.
My name is George Ferguson. I'm Hopeville Township President. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. So I want to piggyback a bit on the gentleman's comments before me. I want to talk specifically to the school district's travel policy or what I understand it to be on the website. When I read this travel policy, what I see is something that's discriminatory and appears to have the goal of driving students to vaccinate. It appears to create two different classes of students, a vaxxed and unvaxxed class. Specifically, the requirement requires that the unvaxxed quarantine after travel, now for 14 days, with no option to test out and no instruction during these 14 days. While vaxxed students are not required any quarantine, even as Omicron appears to move easily past the vaccine. I would say to you that one size fits all does not work. Think about vaccinations. There are some of us in this township that has special needs children. It's just one example, but I frankly think everybody has the right to determine whether or not they want to vaccinate or not. But if you think about a special needs person, you don't have even the limited body work we have on healthy people as far as what vaccines, how vaccines affect those children. We've already stuck, we've tried to stick everybody in America with two shots for most of the vaccinations that are out there to limit this virus. And now we're coming up on a third booster. And so if you have a special needs child, you're continuing to introduce these different drugs that may react with some of the drugs they're already taking incorrectly or improperly. So there's a lot of risk and the risk is probably a lot higher than the risk that they have getting COVID-19 because many of them just work through COVID-19 quite fine. So I think the policy shows that it's nonsensical because they have a definition of travel which requires any travel outside the contiguous states of New Jersey as being more risky, I assume, right? So that tells me that Pittsburgh is distinctly different in risk than Connecticut or Washington DC. To me, that's nonsensical. Again, Omicron is now rendering the vaccinations superfluous. And so we're going to continue to have more of the virus rolling around our schools because Omicron will jump it. So what I think is especially egregious is that this quarantine doesn't provide any instruction. I realize the state's hampering you on that, but that's another reason why we shouldn't have the quarantine. I would submit to you that testing would be a far better policy, testing when someone returns from travel and defining travel the same for all individuals. And as I close, I would say, even if you arrive in the United States on an airplane from another country, you merely have to have one test within 24 hours. I'll be done within 24 hours. You need one test.
We need you to, I'm sorry, you've reached the end of your, thank you.
Hi. Glad to be here. I just want to say that I fully support.
I'm sorry, can you please state your name for the record? Thank you.
I'll take my mask off. My name is Caroline and I'm George's wife and I live in town. And thank you. You know, it's just unbelievable. I really am surprised we still have the same policy on travel because, again, this virus is going between vaccinated and unvaccinated children. And as we're hearing now, even more so if I'm not incorrect in speaking, vaccinated people. So I don't understand why we have a different, why we're segregating children, why we're telling children that they should be more scared or different because they vaccinated or not. I mean, this vaccine has not stopped COVID. These kids who have the vaccine can get COVID like any other kid. And in the beginning, they can both be as contagious, both groups of kids. If this travel policy is a recommendation and not a mandate in the school district, then I have a story to tell because in September, we traveled, tried to travel out of state and we were contacted by a staff member at the high school who wanted to know where my son's vaccine record was on COVID. And I said, "We don't have one." And they wanted to know where we were going. Where is anybody going? You know, come on. I mean, this is tyrannical and it's not, in my opinion, fair to the children who are experiencing this stress. We turned around, came home because we lose services. We lose therapies that are needed for our child. Anyone else, you know, has to stay home, no access to academics? What are we doing? Really, what are we doing here? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi. Sylvia Kosis from Pennington, 7 Wydell Drive. And I'm glad to be here tonight. I thank you for your job and for all of your hard work, but I only have three minutes. And as my husband knows, I have a hard time with three-minute limits. I just want to talk tonight about transparency and truthfulness because I think that these things build trust. I have just three minutes tonight to urge and to implore and to encourage and challenge the administration and members of this school board to adopt an ethos and a spirit and an attitude and a policy commitment to transparency and truthfulness. Because these are values that are foundational in building trust. They are basic and critical to any healthy relationship, whether it's a marriage or a parent and a child, in a business, in government, and certainly in a public school where you have tremendous power over our children. Public schools are institutions created by we, the people, and should be responsive to the input of parents and the broader voting public. Each of you and the teachers act in loco parentis, in place of parents and guardians. It's true, this year, many people across our nation are attending and speaking at school board meetings just like this one. It's because they want to know what and how our children are being taught or what they're not being taught. Parents have a fundamental right to guide their children's education and moral values. At a minimum, members of this school district should be able to know and have easy digital access to the curriculum guides that describe the learning materials and activities that our children are encountering across all subject areas from K through 12th grade. According to the Board of Education Policy Section 2000, Code 2230, copies of all current curriculum guides are on file in the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. So these documents are already available and already compiled. Why have I been told that it's necessary to file an Open Public Records Request Act to obtain them? I see my time is up. I can't talk in three minutes, but I'll continue my comments in the next public session.
Thank you, Ms. Kosis. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, with that.
I did want to touch upon a few. I mean, I do value the comments about the travel policy and the unvaccinated versus vaccinated quarantining. Again, I shared with you at the beginning of my presentation that that is still what we're required to do and that the travel, again, we continue to say, the travel recommendation is a recommendation, it's not required. We ask parents to do that and the state does not allow us to provide remote instruction for that either. So that continues to be the case, although we continue to ask the question. The comment about a teacher asking you where you were going and if you were vaccinated, that, none of that should have happened. So that I'm concerned about and I'm saying here for the record, that should not be happening. That's not a teacher's place. And if that's, you know, you're saying that's what happened, that should not have happened. So if you want to send me an email regarding that so I can address it, I'm going to leave that to you. I'm not asking that you do that, but that's really not something that should occur. So I'd like to follow up and make sure that doesn't happen again with that individual. And then finally, the transparency. I'm really concerned that you still feel this way that we're not being transparent. Because in the last month or two, I know that not through Oprah requests, we have compiled multiple reports of all of our curriculum guides for social studies, wellness, and health. Spreadsheets of every book we own in every library in all six schools, pre-K to 12. Every book has been provided, which is not part of an Oprah request. Oprah requests have to be a report that already exists, like a curriculum guide, not gathering this information. But we've done that and just being transparent. It didn't come through an Oprah. It was direct request to our supervisors. This is how we've always operated. We've provided minutes and agendas for every edcom for the past three years. Every document that exists in that portal was shared. So we have been very receptive and we've spent hours gathering these reports and the information. So if, I would ask that if there's something that you're looking for specifically that's not there, we've also offered to meet and say, you know, so you can tell us exactly what you're looking for and then we can make sure that we tailor what we give you to what you specifically need. So that's all I can say. I don't know what else to do. We've given things that were outside of the request for Oprah and it's taken hours of time from secretaries and supervisors and media specialists to gather this information and it's all been provided and very transparent and exactly what we're teaching our kids. We are working toward getting those things online. We're going to be revising a lot of curriculum guides because we're going through the CUSAC process again next year. They've made extensive changes to social studies standards again. They've added other mandates on that we have to comply with and make sure that we add to our plans. So we don't want to put something up there that's going to quickly be taken down, but we are going to make sure that we start getting those things up online because you shouldn't need to reach out for us for all those guides. They should be there for you readily available for parents and anyone who's interested to access. So that we are working on so that you don't have to reach out to us. But know that you can reach out at any time to Dr. Plitzis or through our Oprah request and ask for a specific curriculum. We do provide those. We provided those to parents who've decided to homeschool and withdraw their kids and ask can they have those guides as guidance for their work with their students or their children. So we'll continue to do the best.
Any opposed or abstaining? The motion carries. Mr. Sewicki, would you provide the finance committee report, please?
Sure. There were no, all the items were on consent. What I would say, oh, it's not. The key item that had been communicated to the committee was the capital reserve deposit we had approved. I don't know.
Right on top of it.
Sorry. Okay. So, yes, basically, the capital reserve deposit back in June, we had authorized an amount not to exceed $3.8 million, which could be deposited into capital reserve. Upon closure of our audit, we compiled what we had left, and basically, per, you know, consent tonight, we've approved the authorization of moving the full amount into the capital reserve. So, you know, rationale for this is we have a number of projects that we're looking to do next year. This will help, you know, keep our capital reserve healthy. We have that. We have many projects going forward beyond that. We did have a discussion in financing facilities with regard to some of the added expenses we've had this year related to transportation costs, substitute costs, but, you know, based upon current status that Mr. Colavita has shared, we feel comfortable going to the full amount.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Sewicki? Okay, then we will move on to personnel and Ms. Grillo.
I'd like to request a motion to move the items to the agenda. Second. Thank you. Okay, so Personnel Committee met just before our meeting tonight. We discussed the personnel appointment, so we do have one new retirement. Lee White, who was a former teacher at Tolgate and is currently at Stony Brook, she has been with the district since 2000, so 21 years she is retiring. We also discussed the resignation of Georgine Johnson, who was our 6 to 12 Special Ed Supervisor. We have already posted that job, and we are beginning interviews, or started, we've actually started interviews already this week, tomorrow. We have our standard ECA appointments, so standard lunch, morning duties, assistant coaches for the winter. And we also discussed the job description of our tradesperson, mechanic, for your approval tonight, which has been included. And lastly, we discussed the substitute pay rates. So that is also for your approval this evening. We'd like to increase the pay rate to $105 for somebody who has a subs certificate and $115 for somebody with a teacher certification, and this puts us in line with neighboring Can I have a roll call vote, Mr. Colavita?
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. O'Reilly?
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lindthor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Education Program Committee, for one last time, Ms. Long.
Can I have a motion and a second to, for our course approvals that we have tonight?
Motion. Second.
All right, before I list the courses that we are approving, the other, we had Dawn, who is our reference editor from the Health Department, come in and speak to the Education Committee about what things might look like going forward, and I won't go through it, because it was pretty much covered by Dr. Teresa's report that she gave. But just so that you know, the Education Committee did get to meet with the Health Department. Our course approvals for tonight, just a few of them.
Can you pull a little closer?
Sorry. ASL, Chinese 5H, World Ready Technology, English 4, Career Pathways, and a Gen Ed Seminar at the high school. Did I forget any? Oh, and Intro to Service Learning. So those are what we are approving tonight.
Any other roll call? Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. O'Reilly?
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Lindthor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Community Relations, Mr. Mason.
Yes, so we met last week on Thursday. We had Trip came to discuss winter sports and the attendance. So it's going to be limited to 25% for the big gym, or it's 25% capacity for the gym. So the big gym has 300 people, smaller gym has 200. Tickets have to be purchased in advance. We did discuss with Trip. It doesn't look like we're going to have any issues with people with not having enough tickets, like there hasn't been any issues so far. For swimming, it is two parents, because we're, you know, when it comes to swimming, we're kind of at the mercy of being at the pool in other schools. And regarding away games, where it goes by what the homeschool's policy is. So, but as far as the, I think Trip's done an excellent job of making sure anyone that wants to see the games, and he's putting in a lot of work, so I think he should be commended. And the coaches, these are tricky times, especially with the numbers going back up, and he's trying to make sure that we get the seasons in and people are able to watch their students. So I just want to say on the record, thank you to Trip. We also went over the return to school plans that Dr. Trese gave a presentation on earlier. I don't think I need to rehash that. Snow days, so the first two snow days, we're looking to do e-learning, so we don't have to right away dive into Memorial Day weekend or spring break. And then the third day, that's when we'll have to start going into those days. And last, the Hope Bowl Express, we're going to have another insert this January, so be on the lookout for that, which also brings me to, it was approved on the consent, correct? That was included?
No, I think we need a vote for this one, don't we?
Do we? I thought that was included in the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is on consent, yes.
But we approved the insert going forward up to five times a year at $2,100 per publication. I really think it's worth it. I think the school's been doing an excellent job of putting together the insert and really getting information out there. And I think, I hope they've done a really good job of the presentation, and I'm really happy with it, and I'm pleased that we're moving forward and continuing to do it.
Okay. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Is that it? Any other questions or any questions for Mr. Mason? Okay, thank you. Policy, Mr. Herbert?
Okay, thanks. So we met last week. We didn't have any policies for first reading this month because of the board's switchover next month. We did briefly discuss the homeschool students' eligibility for extracurricular activities, which we had brought up at the last full board meeting. And there is work, continuing work going on to determine, you know, the type of things we'd have to put in place to implement this policy and change the policy as we discussed last week, and there'll be more information forthcoming on that topic. It was also noted that as part of our standard review cycle, we're going to be, the drug policy is going to be coming up for review in 2022. Changes to that policy are required to incorporate some, the new marijuana law, among other things, and so we'll take the opportunity to review that policy and make any other changes that are required, and that makes sense. And finally, on the agenda, we have four items for second reading and approval. Can I please have a motion to approve those for second reading and adoption?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, and a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. O'Reilly?
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Grillo?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Ms. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Ms. O'Reilly?
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Ms. Lindthor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Herbert. Review of board calendars. I'll request a motion to approve the calendars for December, January.
Second.
Now we need to figure out our dates.
So what I would suggest we do typically, as we're going to be going into reorg?
Yes.
We wait and see what happens, and once we select a president and we select committees that we circle at that time.
Okay. All right. Is that to everyone's approval? Okay.
But just to note that the one calendar item that's critical for January is the reorg meeting, which is January 3 at 7:00.
Yes. Thank you very much. Any items of new business?
Vote, though, we got to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to vote on postponing that?
No, postponing on the calendars as they.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, yes. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining?
Okay.
Motion carries. Any items of new business? All right, seeing none. Second public comment session. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by district administration. Public comment is now open.
Hi, Sylvia Kosis, 7 Lydell Drive, Pennington, New Jersey. Dr. Trese, I appreciate you addressing the issues that I have communicated to you and to the board concerning the curriculum and openness about what's in the curriculum. I guess my concern was when I first emailed and asked for, I use the term syllabus, it's something I was familiar with from my generation. I understand now that you use the word curriculum guides. And so when I asked for these curriculum guides back in early November, I was not informed that they are part of the board's, at the department, at the Curriculum and Instruction Office, and just questioned why they weren't readily available to me. So I think I'm very happy to hear that you're considering moving to putting a lot of these things online digitally. This is the digital age, and we do have a website here in the district, and so it would be easier for parents and guardians and other community members to be able to access that information. So I'm very happy to hear that you're considering that. I know I mentioned to you that the Manhattan Institute has developed a model for transparency in school training and curriculum, and it's specifically to address this issue. It encourages the school districts to display instructional training and curriculum guides on district websites in an easily accessible location. And if anyone would like, I have copies of this document that I can share with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kosis. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, with that, public comment is now closed. I will request a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and a student matter. No action will be taken.
No moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.